Good evening, welcome to the town of Emmitsburg meeting for Monday, February 6, 2023. As a quick reminder, we've modified our agenda due to some staff slots unfilled at the moment as a result of illness and other responsibilities. So we are modifying the meeting. For the clarification, we have items number two and number three will be postponed until the March 13th meeting. And these two items would be the discussion related to the increase in water and sewer rates. And the third item, number three agenda, I don't know, three is for consideration approval of the amendment to loan. And financing agreement for the extension of credit made to the vigilant host company of Emmitsburg as a successor by merger to the Emmitsburg Volunteer Ambulance Company. So with that in mind, we have a modified agenda. At this time, I'll ask anyone if they have a phone, please mute it or turn it off in respect to the decorum of the meeting. Now I'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. Our future meeting, our future meetings include Parks and Parks and Rec Committee. Meeting will occur on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 at 7:30 PM here in the town office. The planning commission will meet Monday, February 27th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Here at the town office and via Zoom, bless you. The town board meeting will next occur on Monday, March 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. It will occur here at the town office and it will also be available via Zoom. My hope is everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting. Anybody need to modify or enhance anything? No? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented. Up, sorry, I need a motion. Wow, I'm rusty, forgive me.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our January 18th, 2023 meeting as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Question carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Next. The police report. Deputy, good evening. Oh, congratulations.
Okay, good evening. This is a, this will be my last town report as the community deputy of Emmitsburg. Well, I'll read it and then I'll try to introduce Hanukkah. He's coming from a family event. So as soon as he gets here, I'll introduce him to you guys. But this is for January, there was one holiday used, two sick days used, two training days used. I was promoted to corporal and transferred to another unit. Hanukkah was transferred to Emmitsburg and I'll go into that more. We did some police one training and siege just training. There was 320 calls for service handled, five arrests, 100 traffic stops. And just to note on there that the ornament destruction over the holidays, that that was part of the arrest. So the kids that tore up the Christmas ornaments were charged with juvenile referrals. And the other arrests were, I think, simple traffic arrests. So with that said, I've been here five years. And when I was young, my granddad said, always leave everything better than when you found it. And I can honestly say without a doubt that in five years, Emmitsburg is better than when I found it. And with my work and the work of, you know, a bunch of specialty units and the other community deputies. Emmitsburg is very well on its way to being, and I say this today, is America's best small town. We do not have open air drug market. We do not have problem houses anymore. We do not have panhandling problems. We do not, they're all gone and they've all been addressed. And I'm leaving and passing the torch to a fine deputy who started just a little after me, about a year after me in Prince George's County. We police together in the same beat. They were partners in the same squad. We were on specialty units in Prince George's County together. He is just as active as I am, probably a little more because he's a lot younger than me. He does things pretty much the same way I do them and deals with things the same way I deal with them. And he's just a little better talker than me. So he has a little more tact, I guess, so to speak. But he's a fine young man. His family's from here. He owns a farm right outside of town. His children are in Emmitsburg, so I think he will make a great addition to the community and he will continue to carry on the proud traditions of the community deputy program. I have no doubt in his ability to to fill my shoes. And I know that he'll reach out to me for advice or whatever he already has. And I'm honestly been on the phone on my day off, all day with handling stuff in Emmitsburg, and it's not a problem. I love it and I'm happy to do it. And you know, we're, there's still a couple of things that I'm gonna work on. It's gonna take a couple of weeks to get ironed out. But you know, they'll, they're being taken care of in this, that's the, you know, the drug investigations that I mean, we'll be closing those out soon. And and that should be the final nail in the coffin for that aspect here. So you know, I'm just happy to report that you got, you did get a really good replacement. And you know, he'll, he'll do a really good job here. I have no doubt. So I thank all of you. I think this town, it's been an absolute honor and privilege for the past five years to work here. I can't say enough about this town. I'm sad I don't get to enjoy the rudders and you know, it finally opened and I'm gonna miss it. And it was hard to to leave, but you know, you don't get opportunities to promote up the ranks very often in this agency. And I'm at the final three and a half years, four years of my career. And I felt like it was a smart decision to do for retirement purposes. And to pass the torch on where I can be a little closer to home and enjoy my family. Because I've spent about two hours a day of my life for the past five years driving up here. So it'll get me an opportunity to pick my daughter up from school and enjoy some of her after school activities and and to move up that ladder. So again, it was not an easy decision, but it was something I felt was the right time. So with policing going the way it's going, we need younger guys that, you know, are up to the new ways of policing. And I'm still old school and you know, them days are kind of behind us. So with that, you know, I just want to thank all of you. Please continue the good fight. Keep up the good work. I know the decisions you guys have to make aren't easy. And you always make it about the town and not yourselves, and I commend you for that. So I'm grateful to have worked for y'all and the ones in the past. And I can honestly tell you, it's been really good past five years of my life. It really has. And I was blessed to be here.
Don't go away yet, deputy.
Okay.
Everybody will. We'll turn to Mr. Mayor first, right?
You know, I love your, your down lineman nose guard for Damascus Hornets and all their championship years. And I really like about you, you're very humble and you brought that to your work. And you bought gifts for children here in town that really needed many times and very special person. And we fought to try to keep you here and we called, called the couple of us called the sheriff directly and requested that. But we understand what's, what's going on and we're, we'll wish you the very best because you only gave us the very best up here. And I know you gotta carry on this young gentleman back there with the childness. But thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Wants to say thank you for your service and congratulations on your promotion. I can completely relate to wanting to be closer to your kids and having a shorter commute, especially as that magic time of retirement comes along. You've done so much for our community. You've made your presence known. I think everybody in the whole town knows your face and you're very approachable. And we know that you had the best interests of the town at heart. And we, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your service and I wish you the best of luck in the future.
It's all been said, but please make sure you show the new deputy where the ice cream is. So we can check that, keep that freezer. You save us a lot of money. You are leaving the town in a better place. Thank you so much.
I also thank you for all your service here too, especially for all the events that we have in town. You spend all your time here, even in our special events for the Lions Club and for the Power Hall and for anybody has an event you're usually here for. So we thank you for all your, your stuff you have done for us. Congratulations on your permission. Good luck.
It's been an honor and a pleasure for, for me as well. So thank you very much. I will miss you tremendously up on North Seaton Avenue. You kept the speeders at bay. But I know your replacement will also check things out as, as well. And if you ever want to come back to open up that hot dog stand that you and I discussed, you come on back, okay? Thank you.
A hundred percent. Yes, sir. It's still, it's still in my, on my back burner of things to do. Deputy dogs.
Four years, we look forward to it.
Yes, sir.
How about that? Deputy, thank you very much. I have big ears. We know that you came this evening not on the night on. This is an off duty night and that tells you, you know, everything tells us everything, forgive me. Deputy, we welcome you. You have big shoes to fill, but we have the greatest faith that the torch will be passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't be any more clear than that. You have always been faithful and we've greatly appreciated that, sir.
And I wanted to say one thing to the deputy behind me. I think success comes when you being a community police officer is making yourself available. And, and what I, and I, and what I mean by that is there wasn't a time that someone sent me an email or called me that I didn't answer. Unless I was in Montana elk hunting and I didn't have service, you know, that was the only time I didn't answer my phone. And, and I think when you are available, it lets the people that we need to build those bridges with and those relationships know. This, this guy just answered his phone and his email at, you know, one o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, you know, or answer, you know, so. And I think that that resonated in the community. He's always going to be available. And even monitoring the local Facebook pages, I always answered any question on there. If somebody had a prime problem, hey, I will handle that. Private message me with the details. So I think that going forward, any, in any community deputy program and community policing, because that's the avenue that we're going now in the future of policing. That building rapport in the community comes from making yourself available and always being available to the town or to wherever you're policing in the community. So if I could just pass that on, I'll bring Hanukkah up here and introduce him to you all. You want to come up here? This is Cal.
My name's Kenny Hanukkah. I'll be replacing him. I do understand it's big, big shoes to fill. We started out in the same place together. We have a similar style. I also am a humble person like him. So that's a little bit about me. I look forward to working here with all of you guys. After all, this is wrapped up. I'd like to exchange numbers. Anytime you guys need anything at all, just get in touch with me.
Thank you. Y'all have good evening.
Be well.
I do have one work related thing for you. February 25th, there's gonna be an event. It's a Saturday morning, gonna be an event in the Silo Hill Business District that Commissioner Ritz is gonna speak more about, but there could be some traffic congestion.
You said 25th?
25th, yeah.
Okay.
And Commissioner Ritz will have more in his public comments for it.
Okay. Yeah, is there, is there something, I'm probably gonna leave. So is there, is there any way where I can, you can kind of just let me know real quick second? Well, the Sarge will probably be here. Yeah, Sarge, Sarge, we can wait for your comments and then Sarge can, unless you want to go ahead right now and I can take care of it right now.
It's up to you.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll write, I'll get it going right now.
This is part of, this was gonna be part of my commissioner comments. We've been talking about rudders. Okay, congratulations to rudders coming new to town. But we have some friends here in town too, that I've been here for 25 years, didn't realize it was that long. And that's the Silo Hill Sunoco, formerly Exxon Station. And since they took the trouble to put a full page ad in the Emmitsburg News Journal, I thought I'd, I'd bring it out. That on Saturday, February 25th, in return for everyone's loyalty over the past 25 years, the first 250 cars will get $25 of free gas.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that's gonna bring up.
To please stop, to please stop by the station for details on the timing of the gas giveaway. So that's all I can tell you now.
Okay, yeah, we're definitely trying to make sure both deputies are working. There'll probably be a line around, probably back to rudders. Okay. I'll get sure, make sure that that is the final thing that I get covered. Free gas. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, the town manager is not with us today, so I don't know that we'll be hearing a town manager's report. Is that, you will be presenting terrific. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the town manager's report from December 2022. I'll highlight some points. Staff assisted with annual Christmas tree lighting and another thing to go over is the, the numerous events such as the fire alarm at the Christ Community Church and the broken sprinkler pipe at the carriage house, down trees and damaged town billboard sign. Also staff removed damage street light from the, the accident in front of one East Main Street. In terms of parks, major event is contractor completed new bridge project in East Eugene Myers Park. Water Rainbow Lake is at the spillway level, which is 16.6 feet. The roughing filters are being back flushed at four times a day and the filters are getting one week runs. The well levels for one, two and three, we have change of negative three, negative six and negative 12 respectfully, respectively, excuse me. And four and five are off. In terms of water production and consumption, we produced an average of 227,905 gallons per day. We consumed an average of 242,147 gallons per day. The amount of backwash water in the month of December is 18.22%. We bought about 442,150 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's this month. In terms of wastewater, we treated an average of 631,425 gallons per day, which means that 61.65% of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. And we exceeded the plant's design capacity nine times in the month of December. In terms of precipitation, we got about 5.75 inches this month. The average is 3.3 inches and we have a precipitation surplus of 4.59 inches over the last six months. The average precipitation for the period from July 1st through December 31st is 21.61 inches. And we have received 26.2 inches for that period. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of February. There's a list of meetings that Kathy attended and some other noteworthy items include staff did some water meter upgrades and created standard operating procedures for changing a chlorine tent. Water and super, water and were superintendent and lead operator attended chlorine disinfection class. And trainees both received their temporary licenses. Also staff is working with contractor to develop maintenance schedule for LG Sonic, the algae control technology. And the backflow preventer placed at pump station and the leak at wastewater treatment plant burst, causing staff to shut off pumps. And repairs have been made and water land fixed.
Or I can say that out loud. If you have questions with the town manager not here, please email her and I'm sure she'll be happy to answer them when she returns. Hopefully she's feeling better. Okay, we now turn to the grants administrator report. Do we want to hear that or are we okay with that, Mr. Mayor? Do we want to do that? Michelle, you are here. I didn't know if that was something you're prepared for or not. So I didn't want to catch you flat footed.
We got some big.
Okay.
We have some big grants being coming through right the pipeline. So take it away, Matty.
Hi, good evening. I am Madeline Shaw. I am the grants administrator for the town. Pretty much the big part for active grants, we are officially done the license plate reader project, so you will not see this on this report. The primary road pump station went out to bid this month, and so we are accepting construction bids for that currently. Those are due, have a due date of March 22nd and we're hoping to bring that to the board on May 1st. Oh, the Silo Hill Playground was constructed. You will notice though, that there is a basketball hoop sitting in the middle of a field with no court. That's because we still need to have a contractor coming and pave the court for that and, but we're waiting for warmer weather. We got two new, new grants, which would be the community park cornhole project. Those will go near the horseshoe pits that are currently in community park. And we also got money for Commissioner Davis's storybook trail. That will, I think we're tentatively planning to put that starting where the playground is, the ADA playground. And it'll be 30 pedestals that'll go along the path. That'll have storybook pages that will swap out for the kids to come and kind of read it after their, before or after the playground, whichever. And then we have 12 pending grants right now. The newest one would be that I submitted, or there was two I submitted in January. One was for money for streetlights to replace all of the developments, streetlights, but we decided not to pursue that. Even though there was a small pot of money for us, they had very strict requirements about what type of light we wanted. We had to use because it was an energy savings grant. And basically we would have had to got, commit to getting dimmer lights than we already have now. And so staff was kind of concerned about the safety issues that could cause. And then the other big grant I did at the end of January was the Emmitsburg Transmission Main Replacement. That would be for the 10 inch mountain line. It's around 12,000, 13,000 square feet, linear feet, excuse me. Going from the water treatment plant into town. That's like our big main line, bringing all the water from our water plant. We had an engineering study done recently that said our fire flow in town is not compliant with state around the requirements. And so that would bring us into compliance with that by replacing that with a 16 inch line. And that's pretty much all I had. Is there any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. Okay, we now turn to the town planner for the planners report.
Hi, so here are some things that I, the town planner, have been involved in with the help of Ms. Willetts. I've issued multiple different permits and no permit required letters. I do want to highlight the fact that we provided a notice to the owner of 101 West Main Street about a potential zoning violation. While reviewing the plan of the residential unit, we realized that he might be renovating the structure to a boarding house. So in August 2022, zoning permits that were issued to this property owner was based on his application that stated that the structure would include two single family residences. So we sent him a letter notifying that he, we believe that he is developing it as a boarding house, which is not unpermitted use in the village zone. And we've been in touch with, we've been in touch with Freddie County as well. So we'll all touch base to make sure that he's not building a boarding house there. Also, I guess Ms. Shaw mentioned the Sustainable Communities Committee meeting on the 26th. And I've been working on the progress report narrative regarding the Silo Hills Storm Water Management Basin retrofit, which is to be submitted to the Chesapeake Bay Trust. The board approved the change order for tree removal work at the last meeting and tree stump removal will take place on February 20th. And the HOA has been notified of this. So the planning commission meetings, we had our first meeting of the year on January 30th. The commission denied the proposal to remove a forest conservation easement requested by the developers of the Rudder Store 84. The commission found that the proposed amendment wouldn't satisfy the criteria set forth in the town code and then a annotated code of Maryland Forest Conservation for moving priority forests. And the planning commission conditionally approved the revised side plan and improvement plans for federal stone and primary court. The applicant must address all the comments set forth in the town engineers memorandum from January 12th, 2023 and obtain all necessary county, state and federal approvals. So staff will certify that the conditions have been met and ask the mayor and the planning commission chair to sign the plans as usual. Also, the planning commission approved two zoning text amendments presented by town staff at the last meeting. And the first one addresses the placement of tall fences on corner lots. And the second one addresses or provides a clearer way to define the front of lot, the term front of, of the lot. This matter will be on the agenda for next month's Board of Commissioners meeting for review and approval. Also, the planning commission will meet again this month and to figure out a work program to determine their priorities and goals for the year. And additional meetings will be needed as we start working on the comprehensive plan for 2025. Also, we bought some new forest banking credits for the water treatment plan clarifier project from a forest bank owner in Emmitsburg. And then also attended the Freddie County municipal planners meeting.
Any questions for the town planner related to the report? No, very good. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Okay, at this time, we turn to our commissioner's comments. Commissioner Bowman-Poll.
Um, I finally had a chance to go out and see rudders. I know that sounds ridiculous, but since the new year, I think we've had four healthy days in my family so far. So today was the day and it was great and I, I'm very happy to see them open and being successful in town. The second is just more of an announcement. I know for those of you who follow the, the town's Facebook page and the website, you've probably saw that we're trying to rejuvenate the farmer's market. So if you know of any farmers willing to sell their produce, but we're branching out to, to look for people who might have small businesses, crafts and, and somebody who might want to come and play some entertainment. If you know of any food trucks, anything like that, please get the word out. And we're hoping for the success. We're just in that one, one week into advertising. So my hope is that over the next couple of weeks or so, we'll have a lot more people sign up. So, and that's all I had.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Ritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I already touched on the Silo Hill ad. The other item that I have tonight, I'm bringing forward to everyone here at the board. I, I, it's my understanding that local media will be addressing this, so I wanted to chat about it this evening. On January 26th, the Sustainable Communities Work Group met to review 12 applications requesting legacy grant money, of which we received $50,000 for this year. These meetings are held at 11:00 AM and not broadcast on YouTube. I feel that this needs to change in the future to make it more accessible to the public. Copies of the applications for these, these 12 applicants, they were, I don't know if they were inadvertently or I don't know if it was a mistake, but they were left in the back at the last meeting on the podium, stacks of them. So they were easily obtained by the public and they were picked up and they were provided to me. And it was brought to my attention then, so I wanted to touch on some items. That work group is currently comprised of three mayoral appointees who are not approved by the Board of Commissioners. Given that one of these applications was submitted by the mayor for his property. Given that one of these applications was submitted by the mayor for his property, I'm concerned that there may be a potential ethics violation. Furthermore, there's, there are inconsistencies in these applications of which require two cost estimates. Some of the applications only include one. The mayor's application provides justification for a shingle roof, but his two quotes are for a metal roof. So what am I getting at here? Am I picking on the mayor? No, but I'm asking the question, who is providing oversight into these applications? Obviously, it's not the Board of Commissioners. Now I'm concerned that the town received grant money for this program in the past. And was the money applied and awarded properly? We're currently at a crossroads here. We are going to be potentially raising water rates in town for, for our residents. And I have to ask the question, as many others might ask the question, we're raising these water rates and there might be a issue with maintaining and dispersing $50,000 in grant money. I would like to add an agenda item to the next meeting. I'll discuss at the end of this meeting for the Board of Commissioners to be part of this process going forward. Maybe like we do with our other committees, that we be part of the process of at least confirming or approving any appointees to these committees. In the meantime, I think it might be in the town's best interest to withdraw the applications that were sent in, just so we can ensure that everything's A, okay? If they're missing quotes, is that going to jeopardize? Is that going to jeopardize our, our, our standing with, with the Maryland Historical Trust, who does review the final applications that are recommended by this committee? Thank you. That is all I have.
Can I answer one?
Sure.
I, I went through the process and during COVID or right before COVID, it's very hard to get more than one person to come out now. So that's why you might only have one, one, because I could only get one. I, I requested five and only one came. And you can't get anybody else to come when I went through the process of the, the grant. And it's been a couple of years back.
You mean a quote?
One quote, yes.
Because you need two.
Right. It says two, but I could only get one, even though we, you can send out five. But you might only get one person to come back. So you might only get one word.
So that's a question that I, I, I think that that should be asked in the future. If, if we can only get one, I mean, obviously you would have the just, you would, you would have the evidence of showing that. But maybe there's something, maybe we need to review the whole process.
Yeah, they take pictures before you had to take pictures after and they come check. So the town planner came and checked everything before and after the project was done. So of mine that I knew about and then had to be submitted to them when it was finished. And they had to approve it to be paid. So you, you don't get any money until you pay it yourself. You have to pay everything yourself and then they approve you if you give, if you get your 50% back.
I understand that part. I'm just looking at it as a whole, as potential perceived conflict of interest. I just don't want any, any perception of, I, I don't like any, anybody questioning anything. That, that, that was my.
Were you looking for?
Only thing I have.
Yes.
I'm not finished. The only thing I had, he is also a resident of the town and homes at home in the town. So he's, the mayor's, is able to apply for the, that's all I'm bringing up. It shouldn't be a conflict of interest since he's a resident here also. So that's how I feel.
Quick question.
Yes.
Process, did you speak to the community legacy folks about their process on their side, how they evaluate the grants?
I did not.
Okay.
And the meetings, they're unfortunately, they're, the last one was held at 11 o'clock on a Thursday, which it could be tricky. Yes, I do work from home, but sometimes I can't get away.
So I understand. Sure. Can I make a request before you ask us to be an agenda item? Could you have that conversation with them to investigate their process? Because from my understanding, having been involved in this at the very beginning, trying to bring this grant to town, from seeing this at MML, the process in part had been the grant evaluation folks are the backstop and the governing body of if that grant comes forward. And as a result of that, if they're not satisfied with an application in any way, they'll push it back to the applicant through the town. Now, your concern related to the mayor having the authority to appoint the board members and then being an applicant, I think if that's the, the piece of your issue that most concerns you, I would actually have that specific conversation with them to find out, you know, what's your view of this? Because they're the, again, they're the, the yardstick in the process. And if that's permissible, then it's a non-issue. And that way we can kind of, you know, I have a clear issue on this and have that transparency that you're looking for. Process wise, one way or the other. But I really would humbly suggest to you that you consider having that conversation with them first about their full process. So if it does come back as an agenda item, we have all parts of the process represented.
I will gladly do that. Now, my question to you, though, is obviously we're setting our agenda this evening.
Correct.
And I know that we can add items after meetings. What is your deadline for that?
To, to, to.
Great question. To, to be able to permit a, an addition.
Modification.
March 13th meeting. Obviously, I'm not going to drag my feet on it, but you know, just getting hold, hold of individuals.
I'd say 10 days prior so we can advertise it.
Oh, I can, I can, I can certainly try for.
Yeah. And I think.
Sooner than that.
And I really think that'd be very accommodating to you. So, but that way we can have the full process and take a look.
And, and there's no, there's no piece in particular. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not picking on the mayor. That's not my main point. That's just part of it. That, that's, that's a little piece. It's, it's the whole process.
You're looking for transparency in the.
Yes.
And I understand that. I do, I do. Okay. Moving forward, any other comments here?
That was all I had, unless you want me to hold up my, um, ad for.
Yes.
It's the Sunoco again on the 25th, celebrating 25 years.
Terrific.
Free gas for the first 250 cars on February 25th.
But they have to visit the gas stations.
They do.
Okay. Terrific. Mr. Sweeney, we turn to you, sir, for your commissioner comments.
Yes, we are beginning, I, I, we're beginning to raise money for the community day in town. Our first fundraiser for the year will be Valentine's this weekend. We're having a Valentine's Day dance. It's been advertised in both papers, the journal and the, and the banner. Please come and help support. All the money goes towards fireworks and all the activities we have at the community day. Thank you.
So that's just for clarification, that's the Lions Club.
Lions Club.
And the dance is on February 11th, Saturday?
Yes.
At the Vigilant Host Company.
Yes, from seven to, to 11.
Okay.
And doors open at five.
At the banquet hall? Is that correct? Okay. Terrific. All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis.
Ms. Shaw, thank you so much for what you're doing for these grants. And I know we've been working for a long time for the reading trail. And a special shout out to Carolyn Miller, who was a member of the Parks and Rec Committee, who brought this idea to us, were probably two, two years ago. It's been taking us that long to get the grant, but, but thank you so much for that. I guess the only other thing I have is unfortunately, the, the town of Thurmond and Myersville has been getting some publicity about their water issues and some of their testing. And I'd like to see us get ahead of the, of the ball and, and go ahead and do this testing for us so we can get some results and, and keep our citizens informed of what's, what's happening with our water and where we, where we stand with this particular test. And it's kind of a tricky situation. MDE, you know, sends a letter to the town of Thurmond saying, hey, you have this chemical in your well water. But there's, they have no requirements to say, this is how you fix it or this is what you have to do to fix it. So it's, it's a, it's kind of a funny double edged sword there. But I think to, to, we have some citizens that are kind of concerned and want to know if we're doing our testing. And I did some research. I think we can get that test done for about $1,300 per source. And I think we can probably do it with just one, one test because of our three wells all come into a single feed point. And then, you know, go from there if we would end up having. But I would really like, you know, mayor to consider having that test done and, and get the results out to our people. So that's all I got.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to Commissioner Davis? What, what is the name of that chemical? I can't remember.
Oh, now you asked me too quick. I'll call you about midnight. I'll remember it about midnight.
Well, you can call me tomorrow.
No, I'll do the midnight thing.
That would be tomorrow.
Gosh.
It's fine.
I forget. I'll, I'll figure it out, but it's a.
Is it a forever chemical categorically like?
Yeah, actually what it comes from is things like Teflon. It all started back with the, the paint company that came out with the Teflon stuff down in West Virginia. And it was contaminating the groundwaters and things like that. And unfortunately, what MDE has done is, or I guess somebody above MDE, they taken their testing from millions to billions now. So they're saying, you know, they're trying to find that least little bit, but they still don't have anything to say, hey, that well has, you know, so many billion parts per million or billion in there. You got to shut it down. They don't say that at all. They go, oh, this is bad, but they don't tell you to shut the well down. So it's kind of a, it's, it's a funny thing, but I'd just like to get for us to get ahead of it.
Thank you, sir. I'll just say this, it's a pleasure to be back on my feet. I appreciate the mayor putting in every public media commissioner Rodan will absent 300 times. I was, I think in my record here, I think I've been absent in about 12, 13 years, four times. So I'm sorry, but there's, I was just completely under the weather. So, and for those of you who reached out and asked, you okay? I'm okay. So thank you and I appreciate that. Congratulations to rudders on opening after a long process. It seemed that business there is booming. There are a lot of folks over there doing their thing. The other side of it is shocker. With this, I'll conclude my comments and we now turn to the mayor for his comments.
It's sort of skewed toward the last part of the, the month, but, excuse me. I attended the Frederick County Builders Association luncheon. And one of the speakers was Eric Soder. And he, he's with Rogers and Associates. And I, I put a call into him to ask him if he'll come up and give us a, a little PowerPoint on, on the, the map of seats in schools and like, it's, it's very kind of complicated. This moves this way and that moves that way. And you probably know all this, but, and I haven't heard back from, but it was a terrific presentation. And there's still interest in, in, it was expressed down there and a couple of people on the Frailly property. Man, what was going on there? And I don't have anything else above that. Went to that evening, I went to Winchester Hall and dinner for the mayors and purchases with the new county executive. And, but most of the time was spent on I-70, expanding the roads. That, that seemed to engulf the whole, whole evening. And we're, it's a monthly thing and it was very nice to meet her first time. And I, I, I met her before what more, this was a more relaxing and it was good to talk to her. Last Friday in the morning, I traveled to Washington DC with Conrad Weaver and my grandson and, and went to Ukrainian prayer breakfast and it was incredible. It's 17th year they've had one, over 300 people were there in attendance there. I, I think at least three US ambassadors and five or six congressmen and, and people from, I think up to 15 different countries were there and, and support praying for what's going on over there. And I did meet with the Ukrainian ambassador of the United States and she's interested in what we're doing up here. She heard about it and they help us out with something we're doing with the local community up here to bring a little thing. I, it's, I guess it's a positive note that it gets Emmitsburg playing a bigger game. And I like it and we don't know where, just push it out there and see where it goes. We might have an event this summer. The Ukrainian National Day of Independence is August 24th. And we're looking at working with the mount on, on some things there with the group here. Also met with a member for the, our sister city, Lusk City Council. And he, and it was very interesting, wonderful, wonderful meeting with him. Most profound meeting was with a group of about 10 children who are traveling across our country. They're visiting now their group of children who lost their fathers in the war and they were killed in the war. And they're on their way to Seattle from visiting here. And it's very, just a, it's just a really touching moment. And then from there, we went down to the Bible museum and then for lunch. And then there was a dinner later in the evening at the Bible museum where there are over 500 people in attendance. And I think you may have known the Ukrainian ballet, I think was at the county center first time this, the same week. So it was a good time and to be down there. But it was just absolutely wonderful experience and to be there. And they're, they're, they're fighting it out. These are people there. There was a soldier, one soldier there had lost his arm and a couple of them were still there for tigs. And this is what we want to do for our town. And, and I don't like to get in this pettiness, you know, this stuff like this there. I've talked to two commissioners up here and about, about going for things like that. They told me the same thing that Commissioner Sweeney said, hey, you live here, you can't do it. And we did, my wife did get two bids for a stainless steel, the metal roof and then possibly because something back, a thread back in history said it had a tile roof and maybe, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be accepted by the historic society. But all these prices were given last spring and they said, you know, we can't hold the prices. I don't know what they are on this side of the supply chain. The roof was going to cost $36,000 if I want to keep it in tenor in there. And I felt it was appropriate as a resident of this town for, since 19, excuse me, 2003. I, I, we should be able to apply for a loan like this. And, and I appoint everybody on this. It's not official commission, but it's, I want to tell everybody it's been in business since 2012. I put it in there when I became a sustainable community. We couldn't afford to go to Main Street. We can't, we can't afford that. So what we want for a sustainable commission, Susan Sipperley and I, and, and what we benefit was that we could get $50,000 a year to match. It has to be matched. You don't just walk out there with a check. It has to match. You have to pay for it. You have the bids and it has to be checked out by the state. And, and, and it's over, I think we, at one time we assessed not too distant in the back history, over a million dollars worth of work's been done to properties downtown. And it's outstanding. We've helped them out, but that would have never happened if we had there. And yes, I do appoint everybody on that and I have since 2012. And that's 10, 10 years ago, I think, since we had our first one. And if that's where you want it, it's fine with me. We can run everybody by her, you want on that, because we have two positions. And they're looking for two more members right now. And, and, but I, I, I'll make it really clear. It's, we've tried to do everything. I'm a resident here and my wife is, she can apply for that. And it's an historic home, it's on the register. And it's a profound expense to spend $36,000 on a roof and chump change. So, but anyway, neither here, I passed her. You got to pray for me. See they're up there.
Mr. President, if I just may add one thing to that.
No, no, if, I don't want to get into combat thing with you.
I, I'm not seeking combat. I'm just going to touch on the very first thing you said. I, I'm not seeking combat. I'm just gonna touch on the very first thing you said and I think it's, I think it's.
Mr. Mayor, you done with your comments?
Uh, not maybe, not.
Okay. Will you, will you yield the floor for a moment to Mr. Ritz for a question?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I mean, we.
Mr. Ritz, the floor is yours.
The mayor mentioned that it was petty. That's how he started that and I, I would like to add that a perceived conflict of interest is nothing but is not a petty matter.
Okay.
You never know what people are thinking. You never know what people may say and I, I, you hear all kinds of things in town, so I don't think it's petty at all.
Well, I, I would think that maybe I've had a little track record here in town that may have said, offset that. I mean, we've gotten uh, over eight million dollars worth of improvements downtown with bridges and sidewalks and downtown and uh, I, it's, it's just astounding. That the, and uh, and uh, that you never brought that to my attention. This is a good form of rain, but I, so be it. That's good. Have it, have it. There you go, Michael.
So Mr. Mayor, for clarification, you're concluding your comments? Is that fair to say now? So we move forward? Is that all right? Okay, all right, understood. Well, why don't I, could you please conclude your comments and we'll move forward in the meeting and that way we move forward from this dialogue and we move to uh, the business at hand? Is that all right? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. That's appreciated. Okay, at this point in time, we now turn to public comments and staff is bringing up our list. We have signed up Mr. Sloan. Uh, Mr. Sloan, I invite you forward if you choose to use your time for public comment. And in our new format, again, a reminder, all you need to do is identify yourself uh, as a town resident and then the floor is yours uh, with our timer. Let me make sure our timer is set. We're good? Okay, thank you, sir.
Eric Sloan, live into town. Uh, one of the recurring problems we hear every meeting is the amount of wild water that's dumping into the system. Now, years ago, conjoined sewer and stormwater used to be legitimate, legal. It hasn't been for God knows how long, not in this town. There's either a massive breach in the system that is allowing rainwater into it or we have storm drains that are tied into it. I think it's probably time has come to bring somebody in from the outside that specializes in figuring these things out. I let them go through it because how much money do we spend each time it rains in the sewer system? And if we flood out the sewer system, what are we gonna pay in fines?
We've already done that.
Yeah.
Smoke tested a lot.
Well, I guarantee, I guarantee you got problems. They spoke tested my house years ago, couldn't figure out where anything went. That's why you bring in somebody from the outside that gets paid to do this happy stuff.
I think we did once, our, our people didn't do it.
No, it's, well, my brother lived at the house at the time and he said it was the town people. Then, and then.
I know we brought somebody else in too, two years.
E- either, either way, it's, it's gotta be figured out. You either have a breach in the system that's allowing the rainwater in, or you have a connection from a storm drain that's allowing it in. Next thing, it'd be a general thought about development. Where do we want to go from next? Do we want to try to bring in businesses? Do we want to try and bring in housing? But something to think about in the next five to ten to fifteen years. And let's get that fence project taken care of. Figure out how high we can make it, like ten feet. The new zone. Chuckle, chuckle. Yeah. And that would be it. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Yeah, I think you will see that every, every year when we do the relining of the uh, of the stormwater uh, piping, the wild water goes down or, or the sewer lines, I should say.
Station that serves, we had Jericho Pike. Three or four foot section. It was in a basin bigger than this town. Hey, my paper went through, we found buildings that no longer existed that they had never sealed the lines. So every time it rained, the water got into the old foundation, right down the orange line. It was, it was a pain in the butt to figure it out, but you're blaming people that are a long time, long debt, but still, it's your problem now.
Thank you, sir. So at this point, we turn to the agenda listings. We know that we do not have any administrative business for this meeting listed. Okay, so we turn now to our consent agenda items. Uh, the first item relates to the potential appointment of Sheila Pittinger, uh, an out of town representative to the Citizens Advisory Committee with a term of February sixth, twenty twenty-three to February sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, a second appointment for Amber Phillips to the Citizens Advisory Committee with the term of February sixth, twenty twenty-three uh, to February sixth, twenty twenty-five. So we'll take these one at a time. Um, is there a motion to appoint Sheila Pittinger?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Uh, is there a motion to appoint Amber Phillips to the Citizens Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallett. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Very good. Thank you. Uh, and thank you to Ms. Pittinger and to Ms. Phillips for joining our Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, we're grateful for your uh, participation. We turn now to the treasurer's report. Um, treasurer, we turn to you, sir.
We had a beginning balance as of January first of eight million nine hundred seven thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars. Total uh, deposits for this month were six hundred and eleven dollars, I mean, six hundred and eleven dollars, six hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. Total withdrawals were five hundred and eleven dollars, five hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. Which left us with the ending balance of nine million s- seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. The top ten checks are at the bottom of the page. If anybody has any questions on them.
Okay, any questions for staff related to the top ten checks? No, hearing none. Forward. Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Uh, we turn now to the planning commission report.
I've actually covered some of the planning commission report in my town plan report, so.
Understood. Okay, pretty good. So nothing new to add?
No.
Very good. Okay. Any questions for the town planner related to the planners' report?
No.
I do have something, Mr. President.
Sure, Mr. Sweeney, then Mr. Davis.
Somebody beeped too. I didn't know if we have somebody on Zoom or something.
I think it just means they're participating in the meeting, that chime.
Okay.
Unless staff says there's a question related to this, but there's no one signed up. So I just think they're participating.
Didn't know if anybody, if anyone touched into the ding dong or not.
Sure, understood. Mr. Davis, yes, Commissioner Davis.
I have two comments. So, I watched the uh, the planning uh, meeting and two, I have concerns on two things. There's not, nothing towards you, trust me, but I have concern about two things. One, concerning the trees at Rutter's, it was voted down by the planning commission and I was afraid that was gonna happen because if you remember last month, I asked about that, what happens if the planning commission doesn't approve what we voted on here? And sure enough, that happened. And uh, if I heard correctly, it had something to do with a, an amendment we made to our code uh, about not being able to do the fee in lieu of, that's not the proper thing to do. So if, if that is true, are there any other uh, code amendments that we passed over the last several years that aren't kosher? That we're gonna run into the same problem down the road? Anything that we've approved that we you know, took the word of staff that this was the way to go? And maybe Commissioner Ritz can comment on that. And the other thing, uh, problem I have, it, it seems that several members of the uh, planning commission uh, made the comment about their preference. And to me, that is way out of line. The planning commission is here to make the best decisions for the town, not what they believe in and um, what they would like to see. It's for what's the best interest of the town at whole and uh, Mayor, I can talk to you about that privately if you'd like to, but uh, this is, it's happened twice now in the last several months. And it seems like we have one commissioner, a commission member that likes to take things personal with, against, you know, people. And, and that, that's gotta stop. That's, and it's very obvious. And I received several phone calls about that very uh, very situation. So I don't know if Commissioner Ritz can comment on the.
The, the tree part, uh, so the um, the site plan and forest conservation plan were approved, I believe in twenty twenty and the applicant was seeking an uh, amendment to what was already approved based upon information he received from a previous town planner that he could pursue the fee in lieu instead of, you know, planting the trees and that, that was the avenue he was taking. But pursuant to Maryland law, I believe that was passed in twenty nineteen, there is, there is no fee in lieu anymore. The applicant would need to uh, first and foremost, maintain the trees on the property. If that's not possible, could they remove trees and plant trees on the property themselves at another location? If that's not an option, then it's what you referred to earlier called a banking credit, which is similar to fee in lieu, but it, the process is a little different and it escapes me exactly how that works. So Commissioner Davis, Mrs. Son could probably clarify that better for you right now.
No, okay, if you, if you want to, if you want me to come in and, and meet with you, I'll just, you know, have some concerns over that.
Before, before you answer, if you're prepared to answer, great, go ahead. If you feel you need to take Commissioner Davis on his offer for a later time, remember you also have that option.
I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, I, I can come, talk to you later about it and show you all the texts.
I'll bring coffee and donuts.
Okay.
Nice. Mr. Davis, that gives you a reasonable recourse. Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Okay. We turn from the planning commission report, assuming there are no further questions. Hearing none, we press forward. Okay, so we now turn to agenda items. A quick reminder, uh, agenda items two and, two and three have been postponed till next month's meeting on the thirteenth. Uh, at this time, we now turn over the floor to uh, representatives from DeLeon and Stang related to our fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit presentation.
Welcome tonight, commissioners. Um, um, I handed out a, um, the audit, a copy of the audit report to everybody. And also handed out a uh, copy of the audit presentation that will be done tonight. First, I wanna, I'd like to thank and welcome Ms. Michelle Mills and Ms. Addie Blickenstaff from the audit, the accounting firm, DeLeon and Stang. Before they make the audit presentation, like to thank all the staff for their help with this year's audit.
I'm missing my report. I don't have one.
He's gonna wait.
Yes, I need, I don't have much of it. Would you like to lay it there?
Yeah. Orders.
Did I hand this to you as time copy this right now? Oh, you do? Oh, very good. Thank you, sir. Oh, good. I didn't get one at all. Thank you, sir. Good. I totally missed it.
Ready?
Are you ready? Okay. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for having us this evening. As Cole mentioned, I'm Michelle Mills. I'm an audit principal at DeLeon and Stang. With me this evening is Addie Blickenstaff. She's the audit manager who was responsible for directing and supervising the audit and worked most closely with the staff on site during the most recent audit. So thank you again for having us this evening. And since the clicker's not working, I'm gonna have to say next quite a bit. Um, we did a little bit different presentation this evening. We kind of tried to put together what we call a dashboard, highlighting the things that we think are most important for you to know as those charged with governance. The first slide here um, is giving you the government-wide focus. And again, as I mentioned, we're highlighting what we think is most important. I do understand that you received the final audit report this evening and haven't had a chance to really look at it. So hopefully we'll hit upon all the important things for you and certainly available for questions at a later time. As your auditors, um, we are required to plan and perform the audit to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects and to issue an opinion. Under bullet point number one, you'll see that the town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that the financial statements were fairly stated in all material respects. As part of our audit, we are required to look at your internal controls over financial reporting and to communicate any material weaknesses in internal control. We're pleased to report that none were identified. Under bullet point number three, all transactions were found to be properly supported and recorded. Under bullet point number four, um, we're bringing to your attention that the town was required to adopt a new accounting standard. To us, we call it GASB, uh, statement number eighty-seven. We're gonna talk about it a little bit further on another slide, but it had a pretty significant impact on your financial statements. Bullet point number five, we're highlighting a few material audit adjustments that were identified during our audit. The first one was to record additional accounts payable. It affected both the capital projects fund and the water fund. The second was to recognize deferred inflows for unavailable grant revenues that affected the capital projects fund. And the third one was to recognize the initial lease receivable and deferred inflow as a result of GASB eighty-seven. And as I mentioned, you can see it's rather large. We encountered no difficulties uh, in performing the audit and had no disagreements with management. The audit report and the uniform financial report also referred to as the U F R were filed with the state on January fifteenth um, by the extended due date. I'm gonna turn it over to Addie, who's gonna give you a quick overview of the new lease standard.
Uh, yes, so as Michelle mentioned, the town was required to adopt GASB eighty-seven leases, uh, which is requiring all uh, lessors or lesses to now recognize the uh, present value of future lease payments on their balance sheet. So the town is the lessor to some pretty significant leases was now required to compute the present value of future lease payments and reflect them as a receivable on their respective funds books as of July first, twenty twenty-one, the required date of implementation. When we talk net present value, we have to use a discount rate. Uh, so the lease receivable was discounted to a net present value using a two point three seven five interest rate, which was the latest incremental borrowing rate of the town. So as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, the following receivables remain due for future lease payment collections. About sixty-five thousand dollars of the general fund, which relate to the Up County building lease and just under six hundred and eighty-four thousand in the sewer fund for the lagoon lease. Uh, future lease revenue to be collected for the next fiscal year is just about ninety-nine thousand dollars.
All right. So now we're gonna turn to, the next few slides are going to be talking about the government-wide uh, presentation. The total assets of the town as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two was forty-two point five million. And that was about an eight percent increase over where it was at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And as you can see by the pie chart, um, capital assets comprises seventy-four percent of the total assets and your cash and cash equivalents comprise seventeen percent of the total. The remaining nine percent is receivables, restricted cash and investments. On the next slide, we're showing the town's total liabilities. As of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, the total liabilities were just about six point six million, down slightly, about six percent from fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And as the pie chart reveals, uh, your debt obligations comprise eighty-one percent of that total at just under five point four million. Um, the next largest would be your accounts payable and accrued liabilities, about seven hundred and The next largest would be your accounts payable and accrued liabilities, about 754,000. And your net pension liability is currently 510,000. Here's a few other financial highlights as it pertains to the government wide presentation. Your total net pension, uh, net position at the end of fiscal year 2022 was about 33.4 million, of which 1.1 million was restricted. Overall, from a government wide perspective, there was an increase in net position of about 956,000. Total government wide revenues were 5.3 million, up 1.1 million from the prior year. Total government wide expenses were 4.3 million. That was about $104,000 increase from the prior fiscal year. I, I'm sure you're aware that during fiscal year 2022, the town received their first ARPA payment in July of 2021. None of those monies were spent in the current fiscal year and that 1.6 million is sitting in the water fund as a deferred inflow. The total debt payments due within the next year are about 194,000.
We're now going to drill down and look at a similar financial highlights, but at a fund level, which is what you are used to seeing. So we're going to start with the general fund. General fund total assets were 1.9 million, about a $46,000 increase from fiscal year 21. General fund total liabilities were sitting at about 120,000, a $19,000 decrease from the prior year. Assets minus our liabilities give us our fund balance, which was just about 1.6 million. A small $540 as a non-spendable fund balance, 109,000 committed for future employee payout benefits and the remaining 1.5 million of unassigned. Overall, there was a small deficiency of revenues under expenditures of $6,600 versus in excess of 192 in fiscal year 21. This is giving a quick snapshot of the general fund revenues year over year. As you can see on the bottom, total revenues were 2.1 million, a very small increase of $7,600 from the fiscal, from fiscal year 21. So as you go across the top major categories, taxes, intergovernmental revenues, service charges and other revenues, you can see all of them remained relatively flat year over year. Uh, on the other side of expenses, general fund total expenses were 1.6 million. Plus there was a transfer to the capital projects fund of 479,000, resulting in an overall increase of expense of 206,000. If we look here, you can see the largest increases were in the general government category as well as a slight increase in public works. And the transfer increased from 331,000 to 479,000, which was due to the large excess from fiscal year 21. You keep going? Sure. Uh, we're, we're now going to talk about the capital projects fund. So capital projects fund total assets were 1.1 million, a 900, $198,000 increase from fiscal year 21. Total liabilities were 38,000, a $33,000 increase from the prior year. And there is total deferred inflate, inflows of 177,000, which represent unearned grant revenues at year end. Assets minus our liabilities again, give us our total fund balance of 880,000, of which 49,000 is restricted for impact fees and the remaining 831,000 remains assigned for future capital projects. Overall, at year end, there is an excess of revenues over expenditures of 58,000 versus in excess of 96,000 in fiscal year 21.
Question?
Yes.
I'm looking at, if you could back up, thank you.
Yep.
Item three, unearned grant revenues. Does that represent the idea that we've received the grant? Is, is like the, the term unearned, unearned is throwing me.
Yeah. So, so it means that the town has the, the cash in hand for the grant, but you don't have the qualifying expenditures to recognize the revenue.
Okay. So the.
So once you spend it, you will put the revenue on the books.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, capital projects fund total revenues were 770,000 plus the 479,000 transferred from general, an overall increase of 696,000. As you can see in the first category, uh, intergovernmental, governmental revenues went from about 113,000 to 720. This was due to a significant increase in grant activity of the capital projects fund during fiscal year 2022, specifically the ADA sidewalk project. As we scroll across, you'll see the other categories remained relatively flat. Uh, as expected, since our grant revenue increase, also our expenses increased. So capital projects fund total expenses were 1.2 million, a $734,000 increase from fiscal year 21. And as we can see, the expenses within our public works category shot up due to the various grant projects year over year.
Now we're going to switch to the business type activities and do a few slides on both the water and the sewer fund. Under bullet point number one, our water fund total assets were about 8.4 million. That was a significant increase over fiscal year 2021. Our water fund capital assets net of depreciation were 6.5 million at the end of the year. Our water fund liabilities were 682,000, a decrease from the prior year by about 247,000. The water fund net position was 6.1 million. And you'll see that it's comprised of three, three buckets. The net investment in capital assets is 6.1 million. Restricted for a specific purpose is about 250,000. And the remaining balance is unrestricted and it's negative 170. Overall, there was an increase in that position of 202,000 for the year. On the next slide, it shows the operating revenues for the water fund. You'll see that the charges for services increased from about 617,000 in fiscal year 2021 to just over 739,000 for fiscal year 2022. There was also significant grant activity in the water fund related to, I believe, the water, water clarifier project. And again, miscellaneous income is insignificant. Overall, the operating revenues were 939,000. And again, that was a $318,000 increase from the prior year. Our water fund expenses, operating expenses were just about 752,000. Again, that was very comparable to the prior year. And you can see that as you look at the bar graph here, every number is pretty much in alignment with the prior year. Next, we'll, we'll look at the sewer fund. The sewer fund total assets were 26.1 million, about a $446,000 increase from the prior fiscal year. Sewer fund capital assets net were 20.1 million. Sewer fund total liabilities were 5.2 million, again fairly comparable to the prior year. Sewer fund net position was 20.2 million. The amount invested in capital assets comprised 15.2 million. The amount restricted for a specific purpose is 756,000 and the unrestricted is the remaining balance of 4.3. Overall, the sewer fund had a decrease in net position of 121,000.
Quick question. Sorry, I'm looking at, uh, line four, item B. For clarification, 746 or 756?
It's 746.
74, oh, very good. Okay. No worries. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, literally. Okay. Thank you.
I can't read numbers.
No, it's okay.
20. Okay. The next slide shows the sewer fund operating revenues. Charges for services went from about 1 million up to almost 1.2 million. And grant activity and miscellaneous again were very comparable. Overall, it was $135,000 increase in the total revenues. Our sewer fund expenses on the next slide were 1.3 million. That was about a $92,000 increase from fiscal year 2021. And again, as you're looking at them, really there's no significant fluctuation.
End here with some questions. But we also want to give a big thanks to Cole and Reese and, and the whole accounting team here. You know, it, it speaks a lot to, to the everyday activities that they do. We come in, there's no internal control issues. We have very minimal adjustments, one of which resulted from a new standard, which every client is experiencing. Also, big kudos to Cole and Reese for being very ready for us and very effective in their responses.
From the commissioners, any questions related to the report?
No, nothing. Of the dashboard, you mean?
Of the dashboard, yeah.
Not at this, not at this time. I guess if we do have a question, we could easily just submit it. Channel it through you, Mr. Table.
Yes. Terrific. Okay. So do we need a motion to accept this report? It's like part one or no, it's just.
I don't think so.
This presentation. Okay, very good. All right. So we move forward. Financial statements, is that next? We go into this or no? Nope. Okay, great. No.
Thank you.
Yes.
And for clarification, you said that there were no deficiencies. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
As profoundly important as the audit is, we're grateful for you guys to come in and look at things with a fine tooth comb and a microscope. We're very happy to hear, I am very happy to hear staff was prepared, they were ready, they were efficient and they were spot on staff. Thank you for your hard work and thank you guys for coming in and doing this great audit. I'll say it on a very silly level. Uh, I've always looked at the audit as punishment for holding public office. So, uh, it's appreciated you guys make it so pain free. Okay. Any other items? No? Okay, terrific. So we now move to agenda item number two. Okay. A quick reminder, two and three have been postponed. Return to agenda item number three postponed again till our March meeting. So now we jump down the line. And to get to our K and K item. Okay, so I'm going to agenda item number four.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have Matty Shaw make the presentation on that.
Oh, very good. Okay. All right. So for clarity's sake, in the agenda, I'm on page 36 of 42, just so everyone's on the same page. Okay. And we press on for consideration, approval of engineering change order. Amendment number three, RK and K for the Creamery Road Pump Station Replacement Project. We now turn to staff.
Thank you. So the proposed change order would be the third engineering change order for the Creamery Road Pump Station Replacement Project. The first one was for stormwater management back in March, um, 2021. The second was for surveying needed in October, 2021. And then this one would be to an additional 250,660 and 75 cents for a full-time construction inspection service or resident project representative is what they're known as. The initial contract that we had with RK and K, who's our engineer for the project, only included a part-time, um, RPR inspector, which would include one eight-hour workday per week for six months. So that's where part of that money comes from. And then the rest of it, the 15,398 is needed to cover engineering, construction, administration and post-construction support for the new 450-day period. So due to supply chain issues from COVID, um, the extension of the engineer said there should be an extension of the construction of the project. So that's why it's going from 360 days to 450 days. And, um, the town attorney did review this and she okayed it. And we also had the USDA who's funding the project review it and okay it. And, um, all we need is a motion from the board to prove it. Are there any questions? Oh, I should note, sorry, one thing, um, in the agenda packet, there was an error with the change order. Um, it says at the bottom, um, yes, let me grab it real quick. On page 37, in the bottom right, kind of right above the breakdown of the expenses, you can see it says initially for 365 days, that should say initially for 360 days. And that is corrected on the document the mayor would sign.
So this time you're looking for questions from the commission, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Any board members have any questions related to this modification that's proposed? No, Mr. Ritz, Mr. Sweeney, nothing?
No.
Okay.
Straightforward. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Staff, any final comments or are you okay if we move forward with the vote?
I'm okay with it.
Great. Thank you. All right. So at this time, is there a motion to accept the engineering change order amendment number three, uh, related to the RK and K Creamery Road Pump Station Replacement Project?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. It has been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero, all in favor. Okay. Now we turn to, may confirm. Setting our agenda for our next meeting. Staff, return to you.
Sorry, I only have one item on the agenda. That's the two amendments that I mentioned earlier.
Okay. If you could give us again, the.
So the fence ordinance, one of them specifying the height of the, um, fence. And the, uh, sorry, the first one addresses the placement of the tall fences on corner lots. And the second amendment provides a clearer way to define the front of the lot.
Okay, um, board, if we can give staff a little autonomy here, uh, we'd be looking for ordinance numbers usually. Are we okay with this descriptor at the moment? Or we can modify it later with the ordinance numbers?
Sure.
They're the ones on the agenda now.
I think these are new items added by the planning and zoning.
Yeah.
After it was reviewed by the committee. So this is, I'll, I'll say it this way. And not to sound too heady, um, we'll take this as a wor, as a working set of agenda items by name. Moving forward, typically we'll have, um, ordinance numbers proposed. And that way, when somebody from the community checks in and wants to know about it, they can cross-reference where it might fit into the, um, the ordinances. So no worries, but the board's on board unanimously with moving forward this way. But when the final draft comes forward to the board, uh, if we could see those ordinance numbers, that'd be great.
Can I ask a question on that real quick though?
Sure, absolutely.
Do those two fall under title 17 of the code? They don't have a supplement that falls under 16 as well, do they? Okay, good. Sometimes they do. I just wanted to clarify that. Then, then you're actually doing, you're knocking out four things at once. Okay, but thanks.
Okay, so we have agenda items one and two. We intend at the moment to add agenda item number two from tonight's meeting, the discussion related to increases to water and sewer rates. We still want to maintain that for our March meeting, our March 13th meeting.
Do we think we can get this all done in March or would we be better off to do, have a second meeting this month, maybe like in two weeks on a Monday to knock some of that out?
Without Ms. Willits here, she's leaving on vacation, uh, at the end of the, about the 22nd, I think.
20th. This will be the 20th.
I, what's wrong? We only got three things, are we?
When we have, we would have four things right now unless.
Well, I'm getting on there. Last month, this, the, uh, the water thing was, uh, was kind of a emergency thing that we had to get pushed through. I didn't know if we wanted to set it off another month or get that ball rolling.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's, that's all.
I, I, I think she's only prepared to, right now, uh, talking to her today, she, um, they go in March. Let's just have a discussion in March and we can, if we need another meeting in March, we'll have another meeting in March.
Okay, yeah. It was just last month. We didn't think we could get this all taken care of to get it into effect July 1. So I didn't know if a month was going to throw us off or we had to meet again. So that's all.
That's a good point. Very good point.
Okay, so Commissioner Davis. Okay, so Commissioner Davis, we're gonna, okay, we'll go with one, and we'll see if we need two. Is that fair?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so, uh, next agenda item we'll add is, well, hold on. Are we? I'll just go with, uh, informal consensus right now. Discussion related to increases to water and sewer rates, we're okay to add that to the agenda's item number three for our next meeting, very good. Okay, all right, we have consensus, I have nods, okay, very good. For consideration, approval of the amendment to loan and, and financing agreement. Sorry, to the loan and financing agreement for the extension of credit made to the vigilant host company of Emmitsburg as a successor by merger to the Emmitsburg Volunteer Ambulance Company. That would be our fourth item for the meeting. Everybody's on board with this, that's sufficient? Okay, very good, all right, so. Is there a motion to accept the agenda for March thirteenth as now presented with the understanding that modification to number one and number two will be forthcoming? Okay, so, is there a motion to that, to that effect?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion, sorry, is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
My second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Great, thank you for your flexibility, everybody. All right, the motion carries five to zero. Very good. Okay.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't. Or, I thought we had the nods. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, hello. I, I, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? The motion carries five to zero this time, forgive me. Going by consensus, and I'm not going by vote, forgive me, okay. Mr. Ritz, I'm just going, hey, you know, there you go.
You're, you're doing fine, you're, you're good.
With these things in mind. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, assuming we have nothing to be signed at this time?
Just real quick, the chemical name is PFAS. P-F-A-S.
Thanks.
Told you it'd come to me.
And that's the Teflon-related item, the Teflon chemical? Wow. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting? Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney has made the motion to close the meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Owen Pollitt. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Wait, call to vote, all in favor? Oh, my gosh. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, wow, man, forgive me. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. Good night. I need to go to bed. Okay.
To seven o'clock.